They're in our team. These are all rural transitions.
Yeah.
Kathy's not gonna be here today. All right, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Go through roll call when you're ready. Markle?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Kettering?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
At this time, we'd have to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Everybody had a chance to review them.
Move approval of the previous meeting minutes.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. All right. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
Have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Conflict of interest declarations, I guess we can go around and start with Dennis. Chris Barkle, no?
Don, Kettering, then.
Sherry Hoffman, no.
Matt Evans, none.
Kristy Schultz, none.
All right, our first agenda item is listed at 7:05 PM, so we have a couple minutes. All right, being 7:05, we can start with the first rezon application. This one would be for Ryan Heine and Patrick Heine. Applicant is requesting to rezon following properties from rural transitional to agriculture. Said property is described as the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter and the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter in section sixteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. The E nine-one-one address is forty-two hundred Alphonse Road, Yankton, South Dakota. Right, it's Ryan, come up and tell us about your rezon application.
Yeah, sure. First thing, I do feel that Mr. Evans needs to be excused from voting on this for conflict of interest. He has made multiple false claims against us in court, dragged us through court this year, verbally assaulted me on my property. Yeah, I do not think he should be voting on this matter or any matter involving me or my companies.
Kathy, you think that you should?
I don't think, I don't think it does.
If you want to look at the?
I don't know what you guys want me to do.
Look at some of the false claims he has made in writing to the police about me. I have a copy.
I guess I could lose myself.
I would too.
Okay.
You take the high road on this one.
Yep, so, yeah, if, if there's anything that I disagree on or whatever, I just go to the county meeting, I guess, being as I'm the neighbor, I would say, but I don't see any problems with me just staying out of this. That's no problem.
Well, I mean, if you want to recuse yourself from voting, that's fine. But as a neighbor, you have the right to attend the public meeting and to provide input. That's the way I would see it, to be fair.
Right.
I mean, he has the right to speak, but, you know, recusing yourself from voting would be appropriate. That's my opinion.
Yeah, sounds good.
Can you just state that for the record, then, that you're gonna recuse yourself?
Yep, I recuse myself from voting.
He can just, you know, like, at the time of public input, he could go up to, as a private citizen, and provide his opinion.
Okay, you guys want me to stay out of discussion to them?
No, I just think that you don't, should not vote if there's been some sort of issue in the past. I think we each have to take the high road in that regard.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Do you want to tell us about your request?
Yeah, so, yeah, we want to rezon our farm place to a agricultural. One-third of it backs up to federal property that'll never be developed, actually, and then one corner has a nesting pair of eagles that also limits development there. We don't want to scare away a national symbol in our backyard. And then, on top of that, we are a farm, we are trying to do agritourism, we're trying to rebuild our agritourism business. And in order to do that safely without people raising issues about zoning, we need to be in an agricultural zone, because that's the first part of agritourism, is agriculture.
So what part of the, what benefit do you see of rezoning from rural transitional, which allows agriculture as well to rezoning to ag?
Well, when we have, when we can possibly open the farm again to the public, if we do that, and if we get to that point, we won't have certain individuals trying to say that we're illegally operating a bar in rural transitional or something like that. And because everything that we want to do is allowed under agricultural zoning in terms of doing a agritourism type farm.
Can you define agritourism for me, what in your specific case?
If you, okay. South Dakota tourism, that is their big push, it's been their big push for three years, the last, this whole year, they've been asking us when we're gonna open again. It's essentially tourism that's really just based around agriculture. We run the hop farm, we want, we did have plans to have people come down and have farm-to-table experiences, farm-to-keg experiences. But, you know, that's the agritourism, so you have to, to really do that, you have to be agriculture, you have to have a farm to start. So agritourism just covers a lot of different rural tourism opportunities.
Thank you. I wasn't familiar with your particular operations, so thank you. But you're still allowed to do that in rural transitional?
Well, we've, we've had, we have had, we've had a commissioner constantly questioning us this year on just about everything that we've been doing and not doing.
But I mean, it's still allowed in rural transitional district for you to have your farm?
Yes, but we can't.
Actually, you have more, more flexibility in the rural transitional.
No, rural transitional, it, agriculture, in the agricultural, it's very clear that we are able to have, you know, farm buildings. It's a little bit vague in rural transitional. It's also very clear that we can have events, and we can have a bar, and we can have these, all these other things. Under rural transitional, we are very limited in what you can, if you look at the rural transitional law and Article twelve, you can, you can see how much more limited it is. And so that's the reason why we wanted to go to agricultural, because that actually allows us to have all those elements of the agricultural and as well as building a tourism business.
So do you currently have any conditional use permits or anything for, like, bar or anything?
We have a conditional use permit for a home business and residence. And farm, essentially.
How many acres are you planning to change?
Seventy-seven point five acres.
Ryan, would you use the mouse and show us what seventy-seven?
Oh, it's. It's the whole thing outlined and right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
You go right up to the?
We go right next to Fish Hattery.
Fish Hattery.
And in that northwest corner, that's where we have a, like, a young nesting pair of eagles and, you know, everything to, on that north or on that southwest corner is all federal property, won't be developed.
But you're also right next to Riverside Acres.
Yes.
Residential.
There's, there is over, I counted over a dozen cases where there is pockets of residential or commercial out in the middle of ag. So obviously, having an agricultural zone next to a residential zone is probably not a big deal or a commercial zone. The, our neighbor, if you look at his website, you can see how much he's promoted having his business next to our farm. So obviously, it shouldn't be an issue for him.
Are you currently billing something next to your house there, or is that?
We are building another agricultural building.
Okay. What will that be used for?
Product storage, hop storage, equipment storage.
Okay, help me out a little. The county authorized to send out these letters to everybody and say, if you want to apply for this change, you can, you can apply. What, what are our responsibilities on reviewing that application?
Well, most of them were RTs hoping to go to moderate density. This was a little different, I guess, you just have to figure out if it fits with the area and it fits with the use. And, you know, if you think it does, it's still gotta go to the county commission, so their process.
And they've used it like this for, I don't know, forty years? How long has your family owned that land?
I've owned that land for forty years. We had, we started our farm in two thousand fourteen.
I think the commissioner is referring to, suggest any rezoning to Lakeside Commercial. But I don't know if that makes any difference. I think for, I think the question was the bar, because when it was approved before, when we were here, there was some questions whether or not it fits in with?
There is, there is no bar. The planning, the planning office, planning and zoning office was given a letter by my lawyer clarifying that. We have always operated everything as an event business, we set up events on our farm, and we have never had a bar. A bar, if you look it up, is a structure out of which you serve alcohol. We have never had a structure out of which we serve any alcohol. We have a mobile tap trailer that we also use for catering and events off-site.
In your business, do you predominantly provide hops for other breweries and stuff, or do you mostly process it yourself?
We do all of our own processing and provide it to breweries in the state, in South Dakota, Nebraska, and Minnesota, and Iowa.
And that's your central core business?
Yep.
The events is kind of?
The event, the event was, yes, it was an extra wave, you know, making, making the farm turn a profit. And then we also have our catering business, which is operated in the building that we live in.
And most of the rest of the land is operated as just traditional row crop?
Yep.
And in the future, is that going to stay the same, or you potentially would expand the hop farm?
I, I would like to expand the hop farm, and I would like to grow more hops. We've looked into growing barley, but the money isn't quite there for that yet, so. That's a whole nother thing, and that's a whole nother can of worms that I don't wish to open yet. Maybe in the future.
Well, are there any other questions for Ryan from the board?
There are no special protection items for the, the nesting eagles in any of the zones, right? You just know to protect them and you have a?
I do believe there is some federal rules around what you can do near a nest, an active eagle's nest, bald eagle's nest. I don't know exactly what they are, because again, we haven't really been trying to build anything right next to there, but I do know that we want to protect that eagle's nest there.
I was thinking more from crops or?
Oh.
Nearby or something?
Oh, no, not with crops.
Within restrictions like that.
Yeah, yeah, not with agriculture, there's no restrictions.
All right, thank you. Well, I think that the whole purpose of zoning is to look and see what that area will be maybe fifty years from now. And I'm not sure that ag is, is the future for that piece of land forever. I think you actually have more flexibility in the rural transitional mode. And if you're, you're able to have your events and, and?
Okay.
Function your business without a zoning change, it kind of, it narrows your?
I would, I would like to, I'd like you to explain how you feel rural transitional is more flexible than agricultural.
Because you can do more things in rural.
What can I do in rural transitional that I can't do in ag?
Well, if you want to, you can put homes in.
Actually, rural transitional is pretty limited. He'd have to get a conditional use permit for any homes, and you have to have a minimum of twenty acres. You have to get another condition used to do one acre lots for, so actually, rural transition was never meant to be a long term. And, and really, it shouldn't be rural transitional, the question is, what should it be? And that's what you're gonna have to decide. So I agree that rural transitional really limits what he can do.
So can you, Bill, can you build homes in ag then, more, more homes in ag than?
It'd be allowed for, for family members that are part of, part of his process, if he can build it on twenty acres, yes. So in theory, he could have, you've got eighty acres, so you could have three more houses.
Three more houses.
If there's family members that are working the farm.
Would he need a conditional use?
No.
Not for ag, he wouldn't?
Not in ag.
So you could build more houses in ag than rural transitional, rural transitional, he needs a condition?
No, I'd be able to say, build the same number of houses, I just need a conditional use permit on a rural transitional for each one.
A conditional use for RT and then not a conditional use for ag?
Right.
But ag, I'd have the restriction, it'd have to be for family members and working people on the farm, yes, yes.
But RT is definitely the most restricted.
Do you know, has planning and zoning ever said anything, like, has, you guys are the people who enforce, like, his beer sales or whatever, is that right?
No, that would, alcohol sales are through the auditor.
Okay.
But that's really not?
But as far as a zoning violation is what I'm talking about, like, is that, can he sell beer in ag, is that right?
I'd have to look at the, it depends on how it's done, but that really isn't the issue. The issue is what's, you know, do you want to let him go ag, or do you not want to let him go ag, or do you think he should?
That's what I'm trying to decide here, like, I know I'm not voting, I'm just trying to figure it out.
There is no attachment of alcohol licenses to any type of zoning. You can have, we, you do need to have a business reason to have an alcohol license, and we have one, and that is through, that is for catering.
Okay. So nowhere in the zoning, like in R two or ag, it doesn't say that you can't sell beer in ag, and it doesn't say that you can't sell beer in RT?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't say that you can't sell it with, like, an event license, the only thing that's limited is in RT, there's no mention of something like an establishment, like a bar, being allowed, but in ag, you could get a conditional use permit to have a bar. So it would actually give you more flexibility in that regard. As far as the one-off events, that's not covered in zoning ordinance.
But he'd still have to come for a conditional use. If you wanted to?
If you wanted?
Establish a bar, you would have to come for a?
Yes, we would, if we wanted to establish a full bar, an actual bar business, we would have to get a CUP.
But it's actually a listed conditional use in ag where it's not listed in RT.
Yeah.
Here's rural transitional. Here's what you're allowed, ag, historic sites, agriculture, utility facilities. That's what you're allowed.
Without a conditional use.
Conditional use or anything.
Okay, so what are the permitted uses if you scroll up?
To?
What, what can you get a CUP for in that? Initial uses, all right, there you go. Well.
So it's still pretty?
Individual.
Yeah, our, like I said, our team is never meant to be a long term, it was meant to temporary and then figure out what it's gonna be. So. Right? You got very few things you can?
I don't know if this makes a difference, but I've been in this community fifty, almost fifty years. And probably forty-some of the fifty years, I had a relationship with other members of this family, not with Ryan. And they've always been involved in agriculture. That's been their primary source of income. And I, I guess I just think if he wants to rezonate to agriculture, that should be his decision. And that's what he's done, made that decision.
All right, is there any other questions for Ryan? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I would like you to scroll up and see the bottom of the conditional uses, please. Okay, so that's it. Construction facilities, landfill.
Is there anybody else from the public that wish to speak on this specific rezon application? Seeing none, we'll just go to board discussion then. I guess, my point of view, I'd say that there's nothing really in our zoning ordinance that says it's easier to rezon from rural transitional to anything else. So there's not really, I mean, if in the future his plans change, that'd be on him to rezon it again away from ag. That'd be his burden. And as far as what he predominantly gets his income from and his business there, I think ag zone district is a better fit than RT.
I concur.
As far as, also, as far as doing anything different than what it's currently being used for, I mean, as far as the ag zone district, it's not like he can, he really couldn't hardly even put anything as far as animal units down there because of the setbacks. He pretty much would be locked out of that. No. So he'd pretty much be limited in using it as row crop and his hop farm the way he is using it.
Except for spreading manure.
Which is a conditional use, which would have to come before us.
Which he doesn't have any.
Yeah.
Which, that's also a conditional use in RT and ag as well.
Yeah, I see that. That's why I wanted to see the whole list.
The one thing I guess that I was afraid of was, I guess I was completely misunderstood with him going to ag, I was afraid of, like, the housing development to the south. There's gonna be a lot of houses down there, I've already seen the plan for that, that are bordering his property. They're gonna come right up to his property line. The, you know, farming doesn't really bother my campgrounds and stuff, which border his entire west or east side.
Yeah, he has to bite with all the setbacks, if he goes to agriculture.
And the setbacks are actually bigger under ag, so.
And even with, I mean, even if he did stay, you know, rural transitional or go to some, something else, I mean, he can still farm in rural transitional, so that's not gonna, if he wanted to stay that, it's gonna be the same as ag? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, my thing was, just like I said, was just the farming was a concern next to houses and stuff like that, but he can farm right now. And it doesn't even matter, but, I mean, there isn't, I don't even know what the closest ag district even is to this.
Oh, I think.
Right up the hill.
There's some relatives and viewers that have that's rural transitional. That's got somewhere here.
Where at?
These guys have farmed this ground in the family for a long time.
I think the idea is it needs to get out of rural transitional, so is this a good fit? Do you think it's a good fit?
That, that still can happen.
I understand.
All, all that people have to do is get the money out to buy it.
But that's about what I'm saying, though, Don, if there was no provisions put in here, as we talked about transitioning from rural transitional to one of the other?
We sent a letter to people in rural transition saying you can change. We sent that to county.
So can you show me that again, Bill, where you were talking about that ag, was that in? So what's the closest ag to this, do you know?
Probably up on top of the bluff, north of where Don lives, on West Eleventh.
Which is?
Well, actually?
A quarter of a mile from this.
Yeah. The actual straight agriculture zone land, you'd have to go clear up till you got north of Highway fifty.
And that's what I figured.
I think the idea is there's a lot of ag going on down there too, though.
Well, yeah, it's pretty.
Well, that's the thing too, like? Well, that's the thing too, like my, my main thing is like what she was talking about, what's it's gonna be like in twenty, thirty, fifty years, you know?
Well, he may make a change and decide he wants to get out and they can reply for another rezone.
Right.
A developer may come.
But there's nothing in the zoning, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that says it's easier to go from, it's easier to rezone RT than any other zone.
Yeah, I'm just kind of looking at, this is like a conditional use permit where it fits the area and I hate to say it, but Ag does not fit this area.
That's not their fault.
Yep.
They have been there.
Just like every other, yeah, just, just like.
We're not talking about CUPs though, we're talking about rezoning and whether or not this should be taken from rural transitional. To Ag or if you want to go another direction, it's not, I think that's what we need to focus on.
That's, that's definitely what I'm focusing on is if this fits. I don't think this fits.
And you're just making a recommendation.
I'd like not to be interrupted, I guess, Bill, so um I think. What Ryan should be able to sell beer there, I think what he has is a great deal there. Um I don't know if Lakeside Commercial fits, like that's more discussion. I think if, like I said, if it's rezoned Ag right now, um i- if he. Like he won't have to have its own and it could stay Ag forever in the middle of. A whole residential area, I mean, that's, I don't think that's a good idea, I guess, to me.
That's something called property rights, they've owned the property forever.
Yep, so.
They should have the right to decide.
And they can still, they can still do what they're doing, right?
They can sell it for houses if they want.
I agree, like I don't know what I'm talking about as far as the Lakeside Commercial, I haven't read through it.
The other thing is also if we were to rezone it to. Anything, if we were going to take it out of rural transitional and put it into anything but Ag. For what his current uses and his foreseeable future use is on the property, we'd be putting him into nonconformance. Right away by sticking him into Lakeside Commercial or into um residential of any kind. He would be nonconforming use in there, which, like you said, he grandfathered in, but why would we want to stick him into something that he's not gonna be conforming to?
I, that's why I say, like, I agree with Don, it's his property, he's had the property forever. And he has the right to do what he wants to do on that property. Until he sells it, like if it was rezoned, say it was R two or something like that. You know, if, if that ever did get sold, then it would have to go to R two if that was zoned, correct? When he sells it.
No, it could go to R one.
If it was already zoned.
Be rezoned at any time for.
No, no, I'm talking without rezone, so like.
If he would rezone it now to R two and then all that would do is a permitted use would be.
No, that's, that's not what I'm saying. I'm, I'm saying that he's, he's allowed to do what he's allowed to do right now, like it's his property, like when I bought Rikens RV Park. Rikens RV Park was not zoned uh Lakeside Commercial. It was zoned R two and it was grandfathered in as he's grandfathered in, but I had to go to meetings. In order to get that campground approved after I bought it because they sold it and lost that grandfather clause. So I'm saying the same thing with him, like if he ever did sell it, which I don't know if he's even thinking about that, it would lose the grandfather clause is what I was saying. So uh like I agree a hundred percent, he should be able to sell his beer and stuff and farm just as he is. I don't know if he should change from rural transitional, I think if he. Does change, like I agree, you know, with what he was saying as far as rural transitional was there to transition to something bigger. Cause it was gonna, we didn't know what it was gonna be and it should go to houses or Lakeside Commercial, something next to what it is already. You know, something that fits in, so if he goes to Ag, then I mean, there is an Ag for miles. Around there and that just seems a little weird to me, I guess.
But it, it, it really, it's, it's, it's two miles. It's two miles from where Ag is.
Okay.
And so in order to do that, the only way to do that under the system that we have, to do what we want, to accomplish what we want as that business. We need to have the agricultural zone.
I think when you're talking about fitting in, you've got Lakeside Commercial, you've got commercial across the road, you've got high density right there. You've got a mobile home park that isn't zoned mobile home park, but it's mobile, then you've got moderate density right next to it, so you've got a hodgepodge. Already down there in rural transitional across the road and so it's just kind of a hodgepodge.
A lot of residential. I mean, it is leaning more. Forward residential as far as the uses around it, I think that's what he's talking about.
Is how is agricultural, how is agriculture? Bar next to your residence of that nature, not a caper or anything, but a farm. How is that? How's that not work for residential?
I didn't say it isn't. I'm just saying that the surrounding uses are more residential than they are. And as long as you don't put a nursery barn in there. Because I think that would be not appreciated by the neighbors. You know, and I think that would probably be the concern of the surrounding area. You know, I think that, that is the hot button when it comes to residence.
But based on setbacks, it wouldn't be possible.
Is your main thing here, Ryan, to just be able to sell beer like you used to be and then?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to move the, the request for a real transition, a rezone for Mr. Ryan to be approved.
Agriculture?
To agriculture, yes.
Second thought. Sure.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, uh we can do a roll call vote when you're ready unless there's any last comments from the board.
If anybody from the audience wanted to talk?
I gave him a chance, but. Alright, go ahead, Bill.
Michael? Marco?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cherry?
Sir?
Schultz?
No.
Alright, motion pass three, two.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks. Right. Next uh rezone application is for Dallas Keller. Applicant is requesting to rezone the following properties from rural transitional to moderate density residential district. Said property is legally described as Anderson's Edition located in the southeast quarter. And Leach's Edition in the southeast quarter as per plat recorded in book S seven, page forty four. And the north two hundred seventy feet, seventeen feet of the east eight hundred eighty seven feet. Except the east three hundred seventy five feet of Lot A in the southeast quarter. And Lot A of the southeast quarter, except the west one thousand six hundred six and seventy four hundredths feet. And accept the east three hundred seventy fifth, seventy five feet of the north four hundred feet. And accept the north two hundred seventy seventeen feet of the east eight hundred eighteen feet, eighty seven feet.
As much as you enjoyed reading that, I got to type that out numerous times, so.
Less the east uh three hundred and seventy five feet all located in section twenty four Township ninety four North, range fifty six west of Fifth PM. Yankton County, South Dakota, E nine one one, address is three zero six nine nine, Highway one, US uh Yankton, South Dakota. Is Dallas here to talk about his rezone application?
There were a few that were gonna be out of town, we told them it was okay, cause we kind of know what's going on. He's asked requests, uh rezoned this to moderate density. If there's a house on it now, potentially looking at maybe developing it down the road. I know water's an issue out there, but that's the idea. Have the ability to, to develop it later on.
Now, is it just that parcel you got highlighted there or was it another parcel too that's connected to that?
We would just that parcel.
So how large is that?
I thought when I was looking through the packet, it was a couple parcels.
Maybe it was.
Let me look. Yeah, it appears. I think it's also that strip.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Be that, that strip above there and then the other little square that's there.
Yep, you're correct.
And what was the intent based on uh rezoning?
R two.
I don't. Purpose, we're at.
What's that?
What was the purpose?
Well, the whole purpose of all these was to try to get it rezoned into R two, hopefully. So that at some point it could be developed, whether they start to do it now or they're gonna wait a little bit and do it. I know some people have been contacted by developers that would like to buy their land, but they're not gonna do it if it's RT and then take the risk of going through the process. So.
And this one says for possible one acre lots.
Yep, R two, moderate density and that was the goal of most of them, to get them to moderate density.
So does it make sense and are, do we have the ability to rezone more than just those parcels around there, cause there's also other housing?
Not at this meeting, cause we haven't noticed. And they, that would have been their choice. I think, I think Gary met with all of them to discuss what they had and what their options and this is what they chose at this time. So something's better than nothing. And this was one of the areas too along eighty one that fit in with the future plans.
Okay, and I guess I just ask, cause there's already a bunch of houses surrounding that area as well.
Yep, and they were all sent letters, I believe, they just, some just threw them away, you know, and some don't want to go through it, they just are happy with what they are. Yep. And that's a risk they'll have to take. But it has more potential as moderate density than it does as rural transitional.
Alright, is there anybody from the public that wish to comment on this application? Seeing none, we'll just do discussion by the board. Guess when you look at the map, from my perspective, if it was rezoned to R two. It would pretty much fit in with what's already there.
Yeah, I agree with that and I think that the topography is pretty rugged, so I don't think it really lends itself to, you know, like. Row crop farming, right, right on this piece.
Well, from the topography, from my viewpoint, I don't, yeah, it doesn't lend itself to agriculture. Too much other than pasturing, which you could probably still continue to do there, but um. And it doesn't really lend itself to like R one, so that would be too dense. And then as far as setbacks go from. Anything agriculture, you're already surrounded by houses and, and. There's already, yeah, there's already a feedlot on two sides, so the likelihood of adding additional residences in that specific spot isn't really going to affect. Setbacks for anybody else.
The highway?
Actually, it's all rural transitional, you know?
I believe uh Mark Court rezoned one lot to commercial last year. Yeah. Did joining one.
Did that not get on this map?
They haven't updated, the beacon gets updated once a year, I believe, they haven't updated any of our changes yet.
I understand your concern, um but that is kind of a residential area and we were just talking about topography, so nobody's. If they want to build something big, they're gonna do it on the flat ground, on the other side of the highway, you know what I'm saying?
And also to your point with that, I mean, our zoning overlay here shows it's rural transitional. But it's clearly being used as residential, so this fits in with that idea of not having a hodgepodge, yeah, I didn't. The other properties adjacent to it aren't rezoned. Or residential, but that's what they are and there's, there's not, they're not big enough lots to do anything else with.
No. We wouldn't be here if it's. No, and who knows what it would um ETJ. So, you know, you do us best here in another couple of years and maybe city's responsibility anyway.
So it's ETJ three miles, three miles?
Six and seven.
I I've not hearing any objections. To this. So I would move.
Yes.
I will make a comment. We didn't hear any objections to any of these. Had a couple of people call for clarifications, but there were no objections.
Oh, that's all right. It happens all the time. So I'm going to move approval of the request for. Rezoning. For Mr. Keller.
All right, I have a motion from Don. Is there a second?
I'll second it for the change to rural transitional. Excuse me, from rural transitional to R two. That's what he's asking for, correct? Yes.
All right, I have a motion in a second. We can do roll call vote when you're ready.
Michael?
Yes.
Barkle?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Cold didn't return affidavit, so we go to Mark Court?
All right. This would be the rezone application for Doug Markort. Applicant is requesting to rezon the following properties from rural transitional to commercial district. Said property is legally described as lot two excluding the north one hundred feet of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter. In section twenty-four township ninety-four north range fifty-six west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota.
He's already rezoned this to commercial. He's just asking to add this on. It's already been used for commercial as. In conjunction with this, so.
Yep.
Right, so is there anybody from the public that would wish to comment on this application? Seeing none, just a board discussion? I think this one's pretty.
Yeah, I think that's pretty.
I entertain a motion. There's no other discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application from. Markport to chart to change from rural transitional to commercial zoning. I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote when you're ready.
Michael?
Yes.
Barkle?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Right, next rezone application is for Delmer Nelson. Applicant is requesting to rezon the following properties from rural transitional. And agricultural to moderate density residential district. Said property is described as the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter. Section eighteen township ninety-four north range fifty-five west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota. Delmer here to speak?
No, he was going to be gone.
Okay. I believe it's on eighty-one. Is that right at the very end of that zoning district?
And he's dual zone. He just wants to change it to that one.
Now, is it that one or is it across the other side? So he wants to change the entire parcel to egg.
Is it an egg? What do you say?
I thought you were going to change it to R two.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, part of it, not his whole farm.
No, I think he was requesting to rezone the entire parcel to R two, part of its RT and part of its egg.
Okay.
Right? That's what the application. Yeah. Any other insight, I want to go?
No.
Is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak on this application? Come on up. Right in state your name for the record.
I'm Ken Mueller, just a neighbor of the Nelsons up here. I don't know a lot about this kind of stuff. Glad you guys do, but. Why? Why don't most people do this transition, which thing, which is what we're kind of doing or you guys are approving? Or is it, is this one for development? You don't know that?
Well, the you rezoned to different districts because different districts have different permitted uses and conditional uses than each other.
Rural transitional is never meant to be a long term. And so a lot of these don't conform to what they're being used as. And so we said a lot out to everybody in rural transitional and those that chose to do the rezone. Other ones are going through, the other ones just chose not to. Well, I don't, it depends on who owns the property. A lot of them are just happy the way they are and they don't plan on moving, so they don't see the purpose.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep.
Thank you. Um. Nobody knows, so what his idea is for the rezoning?
Did he state anything, Bill?
Nobody stated any definite plans. They just thought that it's, that was an area that could potentially in the future. Be single family homes because of where it is along eighty-one and there's some other homes nearby. Nobody that I know of has any plans. They haven't talked to a contractor to get things going. This just saves them four hundred and fifty dollars in the future if they want to rezon.
And he hasn't stated that.
Okay.
Well, I just haven't, makes me no difference. I'm a neighbor to that property and I have another neighbor. I kind of wish he was here. You know, he'd be very interested in something like that, but we at this point, it's just. It's just going to stay the way it is, except the transition if it passes, right?
Yeah, as far as we know, it's just an application to rezone. There's no pending building permits or anything like that.
All right, that's all I. Just wondering for my neighbor and myself, you know? So, thank you.
All right, thanks.
So they're just taking advantage of the the construction to get a.
They save themselves a lot of money doing it. I didn't say we need to have a lot of money.
Well. The only access to that property is that there's a little house right in the northwest corner.
In my understanding, right now the state isn't going to approve any more. Access off eighty-one until. Gary, you talked to most of these people. I had some, but nobody expressed any desire like, let's get this done because we want to start development. It's just that there's a potential, they may talk to somebody, but I don't think anybody has any blueprints or any plans like that.
And Bill, maybe you know this is the property that's directly adjacent to the east. Is that where the gravel pit is going? They started on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Or is it, no, it's here, isn't it?
Yeah, it's same. Yeah, it's same.
Yeah, but there's a parcel between them.
Yeah.
This is where that.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application from Nelson from rural transitional to R two.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion from the board? Roll call vote when you're ready.
Michael?
Barkle?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
You said Northwestern's isn't ready?
We did not receive any information back from an affidavit, so. Not do anything with that.
All right, the next rezone application is for Rose Ann Schwartz. Applicant is requesting to rezon the following properties from rural transitional to moderate density residential district. Said property is legally described as the south two thousand six hundred thirty-two feet, thirty-two and sixty-six hundredths feet. Of the east one-third of the southeast quarter excluding the south one thousand four hundred. Twenty-six and seven hundredths feet thereof and excluding the east fifty feet thereof. In section nine township ninety-three north range fifty-six west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota. Is Rose here to speak on this application? Come on up if you'd like.
Saying that's coming, you were going to say.
You can come on up to the front.
Well, this is a parcel of land that. My in-laws, we inherited a hundred acres roughly. In a hundred hundred acre strip along, I believe, is it near Boulevard South? And I own, it was divided in four sections. I own the middle section or one of the middle sections. This is just, it's farmland and. Some year maybe potential down the line, someone might be one willing to bid on it. It's at the end of the road that comes out at the nursing home. And there's a driveway that goes south. That, you know, that goes south, but behind, behind Bruce Schwartz's land. And so this had an opportunity to, some year if somebody wants to develop it, it's twenty-three acres. That I farm right now, so that's. Like I said, with the potential of somebody wanting to buy it. That's, that's all.
All right, is there any questions for us? Great, thank you. Is there anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, just be a board discussion?
I think it helps that we've got two neighbors next to each other that both want to change to R two. I think that kind of keeps it together.
The next applicant is up directly south of that.
Yeah, so I think I think that works with long-term time.
It's if both parcels were. Rezoned R two, I mean, I guess there's a small parcel in between, but it pretty much connects into other R two. It's already there.
I think this one's pretty cut and dry also. It's right next to that R two, like you said. Just that little piece of land in between, which I'm sure we'd probably change to R two at some point in time. Recieve the affidavit?
I'll second that.
Right, I have a motion in a second to approve based on contingent that we get that affidavit. Uh, go ahead and roll call vote when you're ready.
Michael? Barkle?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
All right, next application is for Bruce Schwartz. Applicant is requesting to rezon the following properties from rural transitional to moderate density residential. Said property is legally described as the south, as the south one thousand four hundred twenty-six and seven hundredth feet. Of the east third of the southeast quarter excluding. A parcel of land along the south boundary and excluding the east fifty feet thereof. In section nine township ninety-three north range fifty-six west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota. Bruce, you want to come up and speak on the? Application?
No, you sent out this application. Originally, we threw it away. Pay no attention to it, then we got to thinking about it. The county sent out about rezoning and. So I'm getting a little older and I got four kids eventually I have to sell it anyway, so why not? I got this twenty-five acres eight miles from home. So, and I was approached that somebody was looking for it, but I probably want way more money than they'll give me, so that's all irrelevant. So we thought, well, we'll go through this and now we got to go to these meetings and. So personally, one way or the other, it's irrelevant. It's just that the opportunity was there. So we thought maybe it'd be a good deal to rezon it and then when the kids get around, they got to sell it or whatever. Because I have no interest in selling any land, so we're just looking at rezoning. Or I'd be more than willing to trade it. But it has to be where I live. If something's going to break down, it always goes away from home, right Dennis? All right, that's all I got.
Any questions for him? All right, thanks. Is there anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, just a board discussion? I guess it ties in right along with the piece right above it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the Bruce Schwartz property from rural transitional to R two zoning. Oh, Stefan, did I say Schwartz? Oh, sorry, Bruce Stefan.
No, you're right.
No, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry, I'm looking.
You're right, Matt.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion to approve the application in a second.
I'll second.
I have a second roll call vote when you're ready.
Michael? Oh, that's right. Barkle?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
The next applicant. The next application is for Maureen Stefan. Applicant is requesting to rezone the following properties from rural transitional to moderate density residential. Said property is legally described as track one. Warren's addition in section sixteen township ninety-three north range fifty-six west of the fifth PM. Yankton County, South Dakota, the E nine-one-one address is four oh seven Dear Boulevard, Yankton, South Dakota.
Right. As you can see, I'm not Maureen Stefan, I'm John Harper. Maureen Stefan's out of state right now, they're in Florida. So I said I would stop in and answer any questions.
Where'd you get that Iowa issue?
We're still alive, we're still alive. This is just a, what, what I thought you would probably be seeing more of. This is just a small. Acreage with a house and a, and an outbuilding, all built before zoning came along. Rural Transitional is. Kind of an oppressive zoning district to be in. It doesn't allow you to do a lot of stuff, so they want to rezone it to R two, which more closely fits what's actually on the property. Has been since the sixties.
So could you zoom out, where is this located?
Uh, it's about a little over a quarter mile south of the junction of fifty-two and Dear Boulevard. It fronts on Dear Boulevard. It's surrounded by storage units and campgrounds, potential campgrounds and. And all of that. There's kind of small islands of houses as you go south on that headed from fifty-two. It is what the property is, yeah.
Is that one acre lot currently?
I think it is a little over if I'm not mistaken. They added some, when they pulled in some storage units next door, they added some frontage property to stay on the right-of-way line.
Does it make it? Does it conform currently with all the setbacks from like property lines and everything, or?
It does not, and that's the one thing they actually have. An affidavit that they're asking the county zoning administrator to sign that guarantees that the things that were there. Before, they were grandfathered in before this zoning change are also grandfathered in after this zoning change. These people saw in the spring of twenty eighteen when we. Ended up with a temporary zoning administrator that thought it would be a good idea to make everybody that had non-conformance on their property. Go and get a conditional use for that non-conformance before they could get a building permit or anything to continue using their property. I think we got that taken care of, but who knows what'll happen in the future when we have. A different zoning administrator and a different county commission, so.
The one thing is, if it's being used as R two, if it's rezoned R two, if something were to happen and destroy. They have more flexibility to rebuild. They'd have to meet the setbacks, but if it's RT, then they've gotta get a conditional use permit to build their house back.
Correct.
So if we make it R, R two, then they conform and they have that flexibility.
It just more closely meets what they're actually doing on the property.
All right, is there any other questions for? Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the public that would wish to comment on this application? Seeing none, uh, just board discussion. I think that. It would make it more conforming for what the current use is and probably what the foreseeable future use is. My only concern is it's pretty much surrounded already, so it'd be an island on its own. But.
Well, it's kind of, things are moving that direction in that neighborhood, I think.
Other than rolling it into the adjacent property.
Yeah.
The same years, but. I guess it can be rezoned at that point, too.
Yeah.
I don't think if somebody was willing to buy it, I guess, to roll it into the campground or whatever, I don't think a four hundred and fifty dollar rezone. Application is gonna stop it.
This is honestly an eye-opener for me on this one. Backtracking an hour ago when we were just talking about it, so I remember. When I was dealing with this, if, I think it's like seventy percent of your house or something like that burns down. Just like they said, like, he can't rebuild it. He has to come back and get a permit to rebuild a house that was already there.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's fair, and that even goes back to Ryan's property. I mean. If, that's what he bought it as, and it's, I, I think it's right here.
Well, and I don't think people would even consider that that would be the case.
Yeah.
When they're going to buy a house, that if it burns down, they won't be able to build it back without coming for a conditional use permit. So I think on that hardship alone.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the change from rural transitional to R two.
A second.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. Any last comments? Seeing none, do real public.
Michael?
Yeah.
Markle?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Huffman?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Alright, the next application is for Dale Weisler. Applicant is requesting to rezone the following properties from rural transitional to moderate density residential district. Said property is legally described as the south two hundred seventy, seventeen and eight tenths feet. And the east one thousand four hundred six and five tenths feet. Except the east seven hundred sixty-six and one-half feet. And the south thirteen two-tenths acres of the southeast quarter in section nine. Township ninety-three north range fifty-six west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota. E nine-one-one address is four zero zero five West Eleventh Street, Yankton, South Dakota. Right, is Dale here to speak? Come on up.
When we brought the property out there to build their house on, there's a. Landowners had parceled it out at six and a half, you know, seven acre lots. We wanted to build on the third section. But to build, buy that one, we had to buy the second one, and that's what we want to rezone in case somebody down. We're not gonna do anything with it. We just want to be able to. Somewhere down the line, if one of our kids wants to build out there or whatever, but it's, uh, we don't plan on doing anything with it. We just want to get it rezoned the way it should be. Everybody out there's got at least five acres. We all got shops, sheds, and chops, and so we just wanna. You know, make it what it should be.
Alright, thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Seeing none, we'll do board discussion.
I'm almost Dale's next-door neighbor, if you think I should recuse myself from voting.
Can be neighbors to a lot of people, Don.
Okay, well, I'm fine with it. He's a great neighbor.
This is right south of those two that we just did, isn't it?
Yeah, yep, pretty much, just about butts up to them, doesn't it?
This one versus, so it does join sort of.
I guess it's one more piece filling in that.
Make a motion to approve Dale Weisler's from, oh, it's. Rural Transitional to R two.
I'll second that.
Alright, I have a motion in a second to approve the application. Roll call vote when you're ready.
Mike, excuse me, Michael? Markle?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Huffman?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Thanks.
Alright, thanks, everybody. Our seven-ten agenda item is. Flat for Darlene Jensen. Is plat of tracks one A, two A, three A, six A, and eight A of DJ's addition. Being accretion property lying south of the lots A and B and track seven and eight of DJ's addition in lot B. In section sixteen, T ninety-three north, range fifty-five west of the fifth PM in Yankton County, South Dakota.
I'm gonna have Tom Weak is here, I'm gonna have him come up. He explained this to us, the, the tract one A and the ones at the bottom are not. They don't meet the minimum size requirement for a lot, but there's a specific reason he did it. He ran it by Gary and I, and Gary was okay with it, but I'm gonna have him explain if that, if you don't mind, because I'll mess it up.
Alright.
Excuse me, those accretion lots down below. They're, they're pretty well-defined. It's like it states, you've got the lots A and the B to the north, and then you've got the accretion property. There was a couple surveys done a long time ago defining where that. Let's say that south border of all those tracked A, B, C, so like that there. So what's left is in between there. And it's just accretion property. I think it was surveyed a long time ago. I don't know if it's Goat Island or. Doctor, somebody had owned that once upon a time, and that was established, so this is what was left over for Darlene Jensen. So the reason that you really can't come up with a whole lot of acres there is because you're wedged between two. You got the A and the B in the north, and you got this property line on the south, and when you extend the lines down. So everybody gets a proportion of the accretion property, that's what's left. There's no more, no less, that's it. And one of the other reasons, I was, somebody had asked, but why don't you just attach it to the property above it? You don't want to do that. All those, all those lots down below, the As are all in a floodplain. If you attach them to the ones up above, guess what? You can't do anything, but then you gotta get, go through the FEMA process and try to get that out again. So you're going, if you were to include it, you'd have to separate it later on. It is what it is. It's not perfect, but at least you're getting it, be able to tax it, and there'd be a name associated with each of those lots.
It limits your ability to use what you already have.
Correct. Any other questions?
Makes sense.
Where's this located exactly?
I'll pull it up on the map. This is down on Old River Road. We did a rezone a lot back.
South of the Case dealer, I think.
So, this is what we're talking about. This was rezoned. It's R two.
Yeah, we just, we did that.
Couple months ago, yeah. Yeah. So what he's done is taken these and, yeah, just made it cleaner, and then all of these are gonna be in the floodplain down here. Those are those one A and whatever, and they can't be used for anything, but like you said, at least now they'll, they'll be on the tax roll and there's a name attached to them. So, the lots don't conform, but it makes the whole area.
How big are, what size were the lots on there again?
I think they vary from anywhere. One right below Darlene is a little over an acre, and the other one's maybe six tenths is the smallest, roughly speaking.
Six tenths is the smallest?
So the one A actually is conforming. Track three, two, two A is conforming, three isn't, eight A isn't, and six A isn't. But again, like you said, if you, if you have this one to this one, then the whole lot is compromised.
And then also, like you said, even though it would be platted off separate, it's not like it's possible to build a residence in there or anything. Any other questions from the board? Alright, I have a motion and a second. I suppose we can do a roll call vote when you're ready.
Markle?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael? Schultz?
Yes.
Weiss is not here. Huffman?
Yes.
Alright, next plat is Lisa Lindman. Flat of track one, Gabe Lindman addition. And government lots seven and eight of section eighteen and in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter. Section eighteen, all in T ninety-six north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Yeah, this one was owned by, there's a whole bunch of land owned by an LLC that's a bunch of siblings, and they platted this off for her.
And she's already applied for an entrance application with the highway department. I talked to nights at logic and he's fine with it, so. It's pretty, pretty standard.
At the, um, at the top, though, so there's a good view there. It's not a blind entrance.
Alright, any questions? Alright, I have a.
Second.
Motion in a second. We can vote when you're ready.
Markle?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael? Schultz?
Yes.
Huffman?
Yes.
Alright, the next plat is Irshman Holdings LLC. Flat of track B in the south half of the southwest quarter of section thirty-three, T ninety-four north. R fifty-six west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota.
So they own both of these parcels. This is on commercial. This was being used as part of this. This is all egg. They just surveyed this off and added it to it to clean it up. We told them they're gonna eventually have to rezone this section to commercial. This is egg. Otherwise, it just cleans up this whole area, and this will be taxed as commercial then, so. They'll have to apply for the rezone, but we made them aware that they would have to do that at some point.
But it's gonna get taxed as commercial right away?
When it's rezoned.
Once it's rezoned. Alright. Got a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second. Vote when you're ready.
Markle?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael? Schultz?
Yeah.
Huffman?
Yes.
Alright, next plat is lot thirty-five Bay Cliff. Flat of lot thirty-five in Bay Cliff Estates located in the west half of the south. Twelve point nine-one acres of the south half of the southwest quarter of section seven, and in the west half of the west half. Of section eighteen lying north Highway fifty-two, except platted areas known as Tramp Seventh Edition. And except lots one and two of parcel A, and further accepting parcels B and C, McBay addition, all being in. T ninety-three north, R fifty-six west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota.
This one and the next one are pretty standard. I think this closes out Bay Cliff. I think these are their last two lots.
How'd you like to survey that one?
Motion to approve the plat.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second, and we can vote when you're ready.
Markle?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael? Schultz?
Yes.
Huffman?
Yes.
Right, next plat, lot twenty-four Bay Cliff. Flat of lot twenty-four in Bay Cliff Estates located in the west half of the south, twelve point nine-one acres. Of the south half of the southwest quarter of section seven, and in the west half of the west half of section eighteen lying north Highway fifty-two. Except platted areas known as Tramp Seventh Edition, and except lots one and two of parcel A, and further accepting parcels B and C, McBay Edition. All being in T ninety-three north, R fifty-six west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota.
Second.
Motion. Motion and a second, and vote when you're ready.
Markle?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael? Schultz?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
And our last plat is lot thirty-eight Sunrise Edition. Plat of lot thirty-eight block four Sunrise Edition in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section ten, T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota.
Couple of these don't meet minimum lot size, but there is a variance on record with this development, I just wanted to let you know, I think, I think I included it in the packet. But didn't, I apologize.
No, it's in there.
Yeah, it's in there.
So. And there's already um, there's building here, I think they had to change it because he had built on the property line, so they moved this line over a little bit. Yep. That is in compliance, yep.
Where is this located?
So the main society is right here.
Okay.
This is that fireworks stand. Yeah, East Side Drive, yeah, East Side Drive is right there.
Motion to approve the plat.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, we can vote when you're ready.
Markle?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael? Schultz?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Did I get Evans?
Nope.
Okay, there we go. For some reason, you got moved to the second line there. All right.
All right, at this time, we will take public comment if there is any. Need a motion, I'm adjourned.
We can't go home unless you take public comment.
All in favor of adjourned?
Hi.
Hi.
All right.